Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott.
I say the Lord's prayers. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. My allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Mayor Proctor, Ms. Ricky Gonsalas?
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markcott. Mayor, Councilmember Marlon Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember David Bensar?
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter?
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Dan Dahl?
Here. Thank you. Do we have any comment cards? Seeing none, I remind everybody to put their phones on silent or vibrate. If we did have public comment, there'd be no back and forth. We just listen. Now we go to item 2A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of July 2nd, 2024, which will be published on July 17th, 2024.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Mayor Proctor, Ms. Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Brooke Markcott, is there any discussion on our past meeting of July 2nd? Seeing none? Please vote your machines.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3A.
Rosalyn Bob to announce her candidacy for New Iberia City Councilman, representing District 2.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First giving honor to God, who's the head of my life and should be the head of all of our lives. I just want to thank you all this evening to giving me a chance to speak. And I'm running for District 2, City Council, in Marlon Lewis' spot. And I've worked with the community for years. I'm the CEO and founder of Life Grief Ministry. My son was murdered in 2006. And years later, I knew the pain. So I knew I wanted to help other people through Christ. So I ended up with this nonprofit, Life Grief Support Nonprofit Ministry. And I've been serving the community with that for nine years. And also, I've done a lot in the community. Back in 2020, during COVID, I was able to get 7,000 gallons of Borden milk for the city. Also, 218 wheels of truckload of fruits and vegetables. And I remember saying to Parish President Larry Rishard, I said, "I could get it, but I just don't have a place to distribute it." And he said, "Well, I'll find you a place." And from that day, for the next seven weeks, my husband and I, we sat up at the courthouse in the parking lot. And we served people faithfully every Thursday. So that was a blessing. But during the years, I've noticed a lot going on with the city. And I know we can't fix everything. But in District 2, we have a lot of poverty. I don't like to say the word, but it is what it is. We have a lot of unsolved murders all over New Iberia. And my thing is to get the elderly to come outside and sit on their porch again. It's been years. These people have been captive in their homes. And it's time for them to be able to come out and be able to sit on their porch again without having to worry about being shot or killed. You know, and it's just sad. But I thank God. I have my husband here with me. I've been married for 35 years to Taylor Bob Jr. And we have one son, Taylor Bob III. He has two sons. And my oldest was murdered in 2006, like I said earlier. And recently, four months ago, I had a grandson burn up in a car in a fire in Houston. And I think for a while, I thought it was gonna break me. But today, I could see it only made me stronger. Because I could see where he's just all around me. And I thank God for that. But I have so much work to do for District 2. If the city give me a chance, I promise y'all, I won't let you down. I've been doing for so long. And this is what I feel like I need to do to help our people. I've helped them for years. And when I say "our people," I'm talking about all people, not just a certain race. It's all of us. You know, to continue to help to do what I could do in the community. And just helping. I just, I thank y'all for the opportunity. You know, Marlo has been an excellent city councilman. He's done a lot in our area, you know. And unfortunately, his time is up. And we have to move on. And I pray that I'm chosen. Because I have so much work for the city to be done for District 2 and New Iberia. And I just want to thank each and every one of you for your time. Mayor, thank you so kindly. And y'all have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, 3B.
Presentation of funding to South Louisiana Community College for City of New Iberia Sectoral Job Training Scholarships.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much, Mayor Decourt and City Council for inviting us for this presentation. My name is Lana Fontenot. I serve as South Louisiana Community College's Vice Chancellor for Institutional Advancement and External Relations. And I also duly serve as the Executive Director of the Foundation for Solace CC. A couple months ago, when Mayor Decourt contacted us and on behalf of the City of New Iberia and the City Council, we were throwing around some ideas on how to make a difference with some fundings from the American Rescue Plan Act. And I was blown away, as well as some of my colleagues, by the vision and the foresight of the mayor and the city council in wanting to pay it forward to residents of New Iberia in terms of getting a higher education. As Mrs. Bob mentioned, there are pockets of deep poverty in the city of New Iberia. And I appreciate that this mayor and city council and leadership within the city know that the best way to change and influence a community is through the education. So in many conversations, we ended up landing with an incredible investment into the City of New Iberia's residents to be able to train at South Louisiana Community College. In fact, to date, is the most substantial investment in our students coming out of the City of New Iberia at $100,000. Over the course of the next few months, we will be awarding 20 scholarships of $5,000 each to students who are attending South Louisiana Community College as long as they reside in the city limits of New Iberia. They can go to any campus of South Louisiana Community College. We have many different programs that are very diverse. So we don't want to just keep them to one campus. Our residents attend many different campuses. And they could also major in any program or major, just as long as they reside in the city limits of New Iberia. The very next scholarship cycle is coming up on October 1st. So on October 1st, the residents residing within the city limits of New Iberia can apply for this scholarship. Again, we will be giving out 20, beginning with the Spring 2025 semester. So applications will open up for the City of New Iberia Scholarship, beginning on October 1. We are extremely excited, and I think I can speak on behalf of our chancellor, Dr. Vincent June, that we see a lot of growth happening in the very near future around our campus, especially with the first solar facility going up. And we will be a big part of that training and training a lot of the residents around here. Before I toss it over and ask for the mayor and the city council to take a quick photo representing this historic investment, I do want to just express my unbelievable thanks. Our chancellor is blown away, again, by the vision and the generosity. But I also want to call and give attention and praise to two members of my team who are directly responsible for supervising and implementing this scholarship program. They will be taking all of the calls from the scholarship recipients. And they will also be making the award calls. That's Mr. Thomas Fauqua. He's our Development and Annual Giving Manager. And Ms. Brittany Decody, who is our Development and Alumni Coordinator. Without further ado, I would like to ask if the mayor and city council could take a quick photo.
Sure. Let's go in the front.
Should have brought my jacket.
Not pictures off the wall.
I didn't touch that wall.
It goes.
Miss LaSalle's joking around, right?
Yeah.
Justin, okay.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
Can you get us over?
Yes. Squish it a little bit on the side. Let's see. Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more.
He wanted a big camera.
Got it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I knew you'd get any pictures. Were you important?
No, not at all.
Get all the work done.
Not today, but... Thank y'all very much. And we're gonna move on. But that's, this is what we're all about. When we put together the ARPA plan and we looked at our community as a whole and said we were gonna do things throughout the whole community, it's just really cool to see this coming together. So I thank every one of you.
And this is in addition to the $100,000 we gave to STEM for the K through 12?
Yes, yes. And the other things that are coming that we're talking about at every meeting. So, no, it's all good stuff. Thank y'all. All right, Madam Clerk, back to work 4A.
Ordinance number 2024-20, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement with Bayward Habits and Associates for the 2024 City of New Iberia Road Improvements Projects.
This is our $17.1 million road program. I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and seconded by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Anyone from the public to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing no one, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proctor, Ms. Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Thank y'all. Now, when we vote on the main motion, I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Tell John I think he's real funny to give that big old packet contract. I think he did that to me on purpose.
Right, oh yeah, yeah.
He's like, "Let me see him read this one."
He killed some trees.
Yes.
We got two of them.
Is there anybody else?
Mayor, just, I got a call today. Got chewed out today about some roads that weren't, that we hadn't started. And I had to kind of explain to them that, you know, the tax being passed, the money being bonded and all that kind of stuff. But do we have an idea about when they're gonna start this?
We feel that by the time he finishes, and they're already working. Remember, we were wise enough to give them some money that we had left from the former road program to get them started. Now they get the bigger contract, but they're already working. So they will finish analyzing the streets. You remember our policies. They look at the worst streets and they analyze in each district and try to divide the money as fairly as they can, evenly between the districts, working on the streets. So they won't have the contract documents till probably October, November, you know? With the way things work, they have some core sampling to do. And they're gonna do more than they did last time because we did run into some minor issues. But it will speed up the work later, the more they do testing now and check our sub bases and see, you know, how we are. So the geotech will start very soon. So it could even be December. Then they'll go out to bid. So the bid process, you got the days that you have to advertise, then you have to take it under advisement. They gotta get their bond and their insurance and everything checked. So it's probably a February start date, is what I would think. We're bidding out the asphalt streets. We'll bid out the concrete streets. You know, so it'll be more than one package. But this, it took us almost three years to do the 12.1. So with this bigger dollar amount, it's more streets, you know, I think this is probably three years of road program. Road program. So we just ask everybody to be patient, but it is coming.
So based on our last conversation with John, he said that we will potentially meet late August to go over the streets so that we can give him our priority list and then compare it to theirs and then decide.
Just like we did with the 12.5, and that worked well. So and he told me that would be August. And I kind of had factored that into the timeline that I put out.
Okay, cool.
And what I discovered last time is our priority list pretty much matched with their priority list. Because we're getting the same roads, mostly same roads. People calling and complaining about the same roads as they did the time before.
Right, right. Well, they going, and that's why it's the fair way to do it, of finding the worst roads in each district. So you all know your districts. But it's, at this point, the roads are in such bad shape, anybody can find the worst roads. I mean, you know, they're out there. And you remember, this is a product of, we went 14 years before we had a road, you know, between road programs. It's just, it takes a while for a community to recover enough financially to float these bonds and to make this happen. So the longer you wait, the worse that the sub base gets, the worse the road gets. And then the drought last year really sped up our damages. I mean, the roads have disintegrated at a faster rate over the last couple of years than they had been. But they just at the end of their lifecycle.
Right.
Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Get that going. 4B.
Special ordinance number 2023-2024-25, an ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funds for the 2024 City of New Iberia Road Improvements Projects.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proctor, Ms. Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Anyone to comment on this? Same subject. Motion to close?
Motion. Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and Mayor Proctor, Ms. Ricky Gonsalas, now I need a motion to adopt.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing seeing none? Please vote your machines. Thank you, thank you. 4C.
Ordinance number 2023-20, uh-uh. Ordinance number 2024-21, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement with the Little Brooklyn Neighborhood Association related to the Neighborhood Investments American Rescue Plan Act project.
Their project, just to tell you before we get started, is a walking trail around the Little Brooklyn Park. So it'll be made out of concrete, probably. I think that's our most, it's too small to do asphalt. So it'll be a concrete walking trail. And if they have enough money left, a couple of benches. But that is the project that the Neighborhood Association picked. And this is just more, more investment of our dollars in our various neighborhoods. So, thank you, Dan. Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Councilwoman Dan Dahl and Councilwoman DeeDee Ledbetter. Is there any public comment? Seeing none? Motion to wrap it up.
So moved.
Mayor Proctor, Ms. Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Dan Dahl. Now we proceed to the main motion. So I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Ledbetter and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Thank y'all. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
Mayor, this is already decided what's gonna be done.
Yeah, basically...
We're not changing no more than we...
Oh, no, we are giving, there's three active neighborhood associations. We're giving each neighborhood association $60,000. They decide the project. They bring it back to us. We procure it. We do our regular bid process. We spend the money, just like all the money that we give out. Nobody really gets money. They come up with the concept. If we approve it, we spend it so that we are in compliance with our rules. But yeah, there's no change in it. In other words, this is done. We will contract. We'll get the contract drawings going. We'll get it bid out and we'll get it done.
And all of the land we use is city land. We're not taking any private land.
Correct. This is all in the existing park.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, this is related to neighborhood associations, but not this particular one. Did you get a chance to talk to the DNA? Because they were supposed to reach out to you. And you were gonna go see?
I'm getting that scheduled. It'll be next week, but I definitely am going next week.
Okay, cool. All right.
Definitely.
I know you need an answer, so I just want to make sure that they're doing what they need to do.
They are. Anybody else? No, we're good? Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. One page down, yeah? 4D.
Special ordinance number 2023-2024-26, an ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funds for the Supros Drive Wastewater Treatment Plant Headworks Upgrade and Rehab Project.
This is our $4 million for the Headworks project, total. Motion to open our public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proctor, Ms. Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion from the public? Seeing none? Motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Now I need the main motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott?
Second.
And Councilwoman DeeDee Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Seeing none? Please vote your machines. Thank you. 4E.
Special ordinance number 2023-2024-27, an ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funds for the fiscal year 2023 LCDBG Clearance Program.
Our demo grant. I need a motion to open this public hearing?
Motion.
Councilmen David Broussard and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Anyone from the public to comment on this item? Seeing none? I need a motion to close?
So moved.
Motion.
Mayor Proctor, Ms. Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman David Broussard. Now I need the main motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Any discussion on this item?
So just to let the public know, these are the houses we already have on the list.
Correct. This is the demo grant from the state.
Right.
We are going to mimic that grant and do one with some of our ARPA funds.
Right.
And that's out right now that people can turn houses in and see if they qualify and they meet our criteria. But this is the original one. They gave us the idea to do the second one.
Right.
Stealing our idea instead of inventing it, and so we did. But this is the original demo grant.
And these are all properties that are owned by people who say you can go and tear it down without having to go through the legal process?
None of this is the legal process or the adverse situation of, "I'm coming to make you tear it down because it's affecting the neighborhood." Sometime we have to do that.
Right.
But this is the better way, the community partnership way to pull this off. This is, that's why it's cool.
Yeah.
What was the total dollar we ended up with?
Half a million?
Half a million.
And then we'll have 450, form some change, I think, 450. Oh, yeah, included in this, because you already did that for us the last meeting. Including in this is asbestos testing and, you know, all the steps that we have to take.
And these, when we tear them down, the owner's still on the property?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All good stuff. Anybody else? Then please vote your machines.
A little delayed. About when is that gonna start? Because people are asking that too.
Madam Clerk?
Soon, because they're doing the testing right now.
They're doing asbestos testing now?
Yeah.
So the public should be seeing some of those eyesores?
To get approved, and then after that, it should be.
Right.
Okay.
And we did discuss, we're not bidding out in one package, right? You said you were splitting them up? Is that still the thought process? All the houses, didn't you say you were gonna split them up?
Well, we're gonna put them out for bid.
I don't know that, I thought we were talking about the other project when we say we're gonna split them up.
But they had mentioned that he might model it the same way as I.
Oh, okay.
I'm just asking if we're gonna split them up or we're gonna do it all at once.
I don't think we've determined, we talked about it.
And we did.
We did. I don't think we determined that yet. I was kind of waiting to see how the... Sometime we turn out the demo grants and we only get one bid. So I'm trying to figure, business-wise, what would be the best thing? Will we attract more competitive bids if I put it out in big packages? Or should I break it in some smaller packages?
That's what exactly we discussed, that's what's on your head.
And we never really formalized it. So I talked to Matt about it. He's talking to the demo contractors. Because I don't wanna, I don't wanna put, you know, 40 bids out. If bundling them in maybe groups of 10 would be better. So I'm getting some advice on that. I might well come back and tell you I'm bidding them all in giant packages. But I'd rather get some advice because I find if contractors are busy, you either need to raise... I gotta figure out if I'm waggling a big carrot or a bunch of little carrots. And I don't know what's gonna work to our advantage. So as soon as I can figure that out, because we had that discussion, So as soon as I can figure that out, because we had that discussion, my gut tells me I should probably bid a amount of packages of about 10. But again, I don't wanna make that assumption, so I will come back to you and let you know. And we'll do this one first and whatever works on this one is how we'll do 450 coming. It's a good question though.
Excuse me, what are the total number of properties that we have on that list, you know, around about number, what have you, about?
Between 30 and 40.
Yeah, right around 40.
Okay.
Right around 40.
Yeah.
It's gonna make a major impact.
Well, there's 40 at once, because you remember one time I tried to tear down 20 houses and I clogged the system up so bad, it took us months and months to recover. This is neat that because it's not a legal adverse situation, we can move on faster.
And it's a, and if you bid them out in packages, then you don't have to deal with three contractors versus contracted for each house.
Right, right, yeah, well, I don't think we can do each house, it's either 10 or all together.
Yeah.
Something in that fashion, I don't think we want 40 bids because then we're gonna have 40 contractors to deal with.
That'll be a nightmare.
And just my staff trying to keep that up would be ridiculous. And then if you get, anyway, yeah, you're right.
Bring it back for discussion whenever you figure it out.
I will, I will, one step at a time. Anybody else? So we had all our motions and we had our discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you. 4F.
Special Ordinance Number 2023, 2024, 28, an ordinance amending the budget to facilitate budget adjustments as recommended by the auditors.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Representative Ricky Gonsalas, Councilman Marlon Lewis, is there anyone from the public to comment on this item? Seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed and Councilman Marlon Lewis, now I need a motion for the main motion.
So moved.
Second.
Representative Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Brooke Markcott, is there any discussion on this item?
This is just finishing the work that the auditors asked us to do.
We have probably two more meetings of this.
Yeah.
There's no discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. And publicly, I'm gonna thank Bob Bede for her hard work, because, you know, she's getting it. Thank you. 5A.
Resolution Number 2480, a resolution appointing Amanda East as a member of the Dangerous Animal Committee.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Representative Ricky Gonsalas, Councilwoman Brooke Markcott, and she's here tonight, good evening, you wanna come up? Yes.
I didn't really prepare anything, so.
You don't have to, just introduce yourself and.
That's fine.
So I'm Amanda East, I'm the new director of the Rabies Control in New Iberia, I started at the end of April. So I have 13 years of vet tech experience, managed multiple clinics throughout my career. And this one kind of popped up and I think it was meant to be. So, doing my best to work through things, I have a lot of events coming up that I'm really excited about, I'm working on a community spay neuter product, project that is very, very low cost. I have several vets that I've contacted about it, working on getting all these stray animals off the streets, another thing that I'm working on, so lots of projects in the.
Good.
And the new building, of course.
We talked before the meeting and I'm excited, I think, I think we're gonna.
Doing my best.
I know that. Any questions, comments?
No.
It's a topic.
We'll have to have you.
It's a topic that brings a lot of attention, I'm sure you're not.
Oh yeah.
I'm sure both negative and positive.
Yeah.
Working on more positive than anything.
Absolutely.
Good, and no questions, any other comments?
No, I was just gonna say, oh, I was just gonna say, I know that the residents of the city of New Iberia will be happy when they start to see some of those stray dogs being removed.
We'll be happy too, because it'll at least mean they're not on the streets anymore and they're getting some kind of care. So decreasing that population that we have, overpopulation of all the animals.
Yeah.
So.
I just wanted to say thank you for serving, thank you for wanting to serve, being willing to serve, and thank you for what you already do for the animal population.
Doing my best, like I said.
Definitely. Somebody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you, thanks for what you do. 5B.
Resolution Number 2485, a resolution approving change order number one for the Center Street sidewalk improvements project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard and a second, I don't know who had the second, I'll give it to Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Any discussion on this item?
Man, why was it decreased?
Just take it and run.
Yeah.
We went through the bids and it came out a little cheaper.
Oh, okay.
So we haven't de-dug.
I didn't know they took something off the contract.
Okay.
Not the scope of work, didn't change.
Okay.
Said something about remove the pedestrian barricade.
Yeah, there was a little barricade, pedestrian barricade we didn't need, so that got us down a little bit. And the engineer said it still met all the codes and everything else, so.
Hey, we'll take it.
Not a major change though, you know.
It could be the other way.
Yeah, oh, well, it could, sometime we do. I'll save that money because they will.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 5C.
Resolution Number 2486, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract binding between the City of New Iberia and Menville and Associates LLC for grant administrative consulting services related to Act 774 of 2024.
This is to hire Richard Menville to handle some of the new money that we've gotten. The 250,000 for the crime camera system and the 75,000 that goes to two local groups. So for now, we'll get into it more, but this is to hire Richard Menville to handle the paperwork.
Okay.
So I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Marlon Lewis, Representative Ricky Gonsalas, any discussion on this item?
Okay, so, just a quick question, I think when we talked earlier, it was two organizations, it looks like there's now three.
They're really, they're partnered though, they're doing some stuff together. So it's, it is three organizations, but it's, they came as two, but they're all working together, all in the community.
So who decided, I mean, I'm asking because we're now adding a third group, who's deciding who these groups are? I mean, is this coming from the state or is this?
Yeah, this money came through us, but it came from the state.
Right.
So the state asked us to be the, what would you call us, the fiscal agent? Yeah, so we're just the fiscal agent for this, no one came to us, it's all great groups, but nobody came to us to ask for this money, they went to the state. So then we are designated as the fiscal agent.
And I guess I'm just, did the senator or the representative, did they decide to add a third person, a third group? At some point, I thought they were saying that we had to decide, I'm like, if that's the case, I got some other groups, but no, I'm joking.
Well, I know that everybody came, the limited stuff that I know, it's not any new people. It's the same people that came from the beginning. How they do what they do, you know, but it's, it's, it's two groups that one group is made up of probably three or four groups. But it's, it just depends on how you look at it.
So they're each gonna be allocated 25,000?
I don't know that yet.
Okay.
I'm going one step at a time, I'm hiring Mr. Menville to do the paperwork and we'll get through that end of it and I'll, you know, talk to everybody and buy.
Yeah, I was just asking because I'm reading the first part of it.
I think, I think the money came on the letter from the state senator, how it was supposed to be distributed, right? Am I understanding, I think that's what I was told, but.
Well, I don't have a letter yet and so I can't, the first thing is to hire Mr. Menville, get him to do his paperwork, then go through the steps. So somewhere along the way, yes sir, but I'm waiting and just kind of hiring Mr. Menville to make sure we get the money, that's the first step.
Okay.
And then, of course, I'll come back to y'all, once Mr. Menville does his work, then I'll bring it back and, you know, we'll do what we gotta do. So it's coming.
Well, Mr. Menville did work for the city for many years.
Oh my God, like 30 or 40 years, yeah, he does all of our, he used to do all of our capital outlay, including the large, large projects. He's scaled back a little bit and so he doesn't do, like sewer, he doesn't do anymore because you'll start, you see that, we'll start talking about a sewer project and it takes three years to do it, so he doesn't want that much of a long-term commitment. But he's still, and he's the pro, I mean, he's the best there is. So all of our smaller projects are, how would I say, our quicker projects, just here's some cash, do the paperwork, make you, you know, here's your documents you need, here's your, you know, go from there. He's gonna still handle and I hope for a long time, because he does a great job, all of those smaller, kind of quicker projects.
So.
But I gotta hire him.
Before we close this conversation, so the letter that you're waiting on is gonna give us the instructions on who to give the money to and how much to give to them? Is that what you're saying?
I hope so.
We're not making a decision, that's gonna come down from the state.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
To that point, that's, that's the way it started.
Yeah, well, it started with the state.
It started with the state.
I know, it's just, it's different from what we talked about the last time, so I'm just asking, now there's three groups.
Let me say this, let me say this, my interpretation of it, and I'm just reading it too, seems like it's saying, it isn't saying any specific group, but the groups, the services that the groups do. It says allocated to teen courts, youth services, and youth engagement initiatives, that's the line you're talking about?
Yes.
Sounds like they're talking about services, it looked like one group could do all of these things. Huh, am I correct or?
Yeah. Language that's in it is how they pass the bill.
Right.
It is two groups and we are not, I'm not being, how I want to put it as nicely as I can, I'm not excluding anybody, but we're not adding anybody. In other words, it came and the groups that went in from the beginning and are still in and that's it, but no one put the names of the groups. So that's, that's kind of where we are, but you're right, but the way the bill is written, it just describes what they're gonna do. And we didn't have, you know, in full disclosure, none of us up here had anything to do with that, it came down from the state. But who in their right mind is gonna turn down money that goes to our community, so we'll get it all worked out.
And I guess I'm, the reason why I'm asking is because, you know, we could have 10 more groups that do these kind of services come and say, well, I want a piece of the pie too.
Right.
So unless we're, I'm trying to figure out, is the state gonna say, these are the groups that you need to give this to? Then we could actually have people come in and say, well, I want a piece of the pie. Because this is just, like you said, teen courts, well, that's one group, but youth services, you know, a lot of people do youth services.
But I think it's, I think it's, again, I think it's the way the language is written, I don't think it's three groups, I think, I think with this 75,000, you should be doing these things. And it just so happened that it's two groups that the state picked to do these two things.
Okay, I just wanna make sure it's the.
That's well said.
Okay.
So like I said, I'm just waiting to get the paperwork and, you know.
What do you mean, Bill, to do his job first? I read a little bit at home, I don't meditate much, but I read a little bit at home.
Thank you, thank you for doing that.
Running, after I read, I run, I'm like.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
And it hit me late, like.
But yeah, so, and let Mr. Menville do his, and that's kind of why I'm saying, let me har, the first step always is to har Mr. Menville, but let Mr. Menville do his job, we'll have some clarity, he'll do his job, and then it comes back to us.
Okay, cool.
Any other questions? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all, get that going. 5D.
Resolution Number 2487, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement binding between the City of New Iberia and For the Record Video Services LLC doing business as Bob Larossini Productions related to recording and live streaming of council meetings.
This is the requirement to livestream our council meeting. And so we are hiring Bob to increase in his fee, and boy, sticking it to us is terrible, no. It's $30, okay, very reasonable, he does a great job for us. And so we, what, sir?
A meeting.
A meeting, yes, sir, a meeting.
No matter how long it lasts.
That's right.
Yeah. True.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, but he does a great job for us, so I think it's just the natural progression to just say, you know, let's pay him and let him do this too. But it is a requirement of the state that kicks in, is it the next meet?
August 1st.
The next meet, August 1st, yeah, so, which will kick in for our next meeting. So anyway, just to explain to you, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Marlon Lewis, Representative Ricky Gonsalas, is there any discussion?
I do.
Yes, sir.
He might need to upgrade the cameras, because I had some people telling me I look much older than I'm really.
I like that.
If that's included, let's go ahead and vote on it.
All right, thank you, man. Anybody else?
I just think, I think this is a great move, it's from the public perception that they always wanna see what councils are talking about deciding, there should be no excuse to log on and see exactly what's going on at your meeting, your public meetings. Although it may reduce the attendance, if you think about it, since it's live streaming, but I think to get it in everybody's living room and see where it's going, I think it's just, it's a win-win for everybody.
And this council, you know, since I was the mayor pro temp, which was a while back, since you were here, we've been doing this for a long time, providing this service for our citizens long before we had to or were required to. And I think it's something, as you said, that's really good and helps us stay transparent and gets the word, and you get to hear from your representative exactly what's going on, you know, because a lot of times, especially, you know, we didn't have Facebook and all that years ago, but, you know, you hear a lot of things or see or read a lot of things on here that, you know, sometime they're one-sided or whatever, somebody has an agenda, but you can see it for yourself and I think that is invaluable.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I was on council when we did this, got cameras, there was two reasons why we did it. At the same time, we made these seats different, higher up. And because the older people.
You saying I'm short?
No. I'm not saying, it's a fact.
He just said he looked older.
But the older people could not come to the meeting sometimes. And that was the really reason why we did it.
That's a true statement.
And they watched those council meetings too.
They look forward to it, and that's really what brought it to, let's go ahead and get the cameras and see what happens and, and the feedback, I'm telling you, way back when the feedback was very strong with doing it and people did watch it. And I didn't think they watched it, but I go out and eat pretty much after every meeting and people, the next day say, hey, I saw in a meeting y'all did this. So you, they, they really do.
Oh, they do.
And I think Ricky made a point about why people don't come to the audience, because it's so much convenient, oh my goodness. I'm sorry. So anyway, that was why we ended up doing it, because the older people wanted to see them in many of these clinics.
Well, there's wisdom in that and it's worked for a whole lot of use. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I just got one question, what, our meetings are normally broadcast on AOC like the following day or two?
Come on up, Bob.
That's why I wanna know where it's gonna be streamed at.
So they're on Cox Communications Now.
Cox.
Cox steps on AOC's programming.
Right.
And inserts AOC, this meeting on cable channel 15.
15.
15.
In Iberia Parish. So what we're adding is the streaming of the council on whichever streaming platform the city chooses.
Okay, so we could choose our platform, we haven't done that yet, right?
We're just gonna essentially hand.
YouTube.
A signal.
I was gonna say, yeah, YouTube is, I mean, that's what people watch it, the council meetings as well, they watch it on YouTube.
No streaming on Facebook though, I mean.
No, I think we just use YouTube.
YouTube, okay, I just asked.
Maybe we do TikTok, no.
And it's a potential that you could put it on Facebook if you wanna evolve to two streaming platforms.
I will say, if it goes to Facebook, people are gonna be in the comments expecting us to answer and we won't be able to do that, so I don't know.
We're not having any comments.
Yeah, okay.
We're not having any comments on this.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm not a Facebook user, so I can't speak to what that would look like.
Yeah, because I think we turned the comments off on YouTube as well, so, yeah, I think YouTube's good.
Me too.
Cool, thank you, man.
People used to go into it for video.
Appreciate it very much, thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
All right, we voted?
Did we vote?
No, we didn't vote, cool, okay, discussion over, looks like nobody has anything else, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Next item, 5B.
Resolution Number 2488, a resolution awarding grant administrator contract to Friar McGee LLC for the City of New Iberia, CDBG MIT Monterey Street Detention Pond Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
This is our 3.1 million dollar grant for the detention pond, retention pond, and one of the requirements is that we hire a project administrator. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott, Representative Ricky Gonsalas, any discussion?
Yeah, are we gonna be digging anytime soon?
I don't think very soon, but we're gonna be digging, I mean, it's gonna happen, we have to hire the administrator, we have, let's see, another item that we have to adopt some steps. We have the engineering to finish, there's a hydrology study that has to be done that we have a monthly call that Lanny and I are on every month. They're beginning the hydrology study, but it's gonna take a little while, that's a requirement of the state. Once that's all done, then our engineers finish their contract documents and then we go through the bid procurement process and, you know, all the rest of it, but, so it's not fast, but I mean, it's a grant, so, and it's a lot of money.
Yeah, it's good.
But I know you need it, and so it's coming.
I was just curious as to how far away we are, but we're pretty far away.
Yes, ma'am, we have a lot of steps.
Yeah, it's still moving, at least.
But it is moving, yes, yes.
What's the cost of hiring the administrator?
They had set a maximum of $100,000. And so that was the fee they put out there and we had to take bids and, you know, figure it out.
Okay.
Yep. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. 5F.
Resolution Number 2489, a resolution approving the procurement policy for the fiscal year 2023 LCDBG clearance program.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed, and this was a requirement that we have these procedures in place for our clearance grant. So we are adopting it tonight and sending it to them tomorrow morning, or tonight probably, because they need it. But this is just for us to have a procurement policy, we have one, we sent them our old one, but we needed to adopt this one.
Is this something that everyone uses or we did this ourselves?
No, everyone uses, yes. And we have to have it adopted currently for the grant. So when they give you money, you just say yes, I'll do what you asked me to do. Any questions or comments? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Hey, Lanny, what's this in there? Item 6A.
Introduction of Special Ordinance Number 2023, 2024, 29, an ordinance amending the budget to appropriate funding for the Acadiana Crime Lab and setting for public hearing on August 6th, 2024.
I need a motion.
Moved.
Motion by Representative Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. This is our first payment that we are making, correct?
Ricky and myself.
Yeah, Ricky, Ricky was the motion and he was, Marlon was the second. This is our first payment that we're making, and then in our next budget, we'll make another payment and then we'll find out if we have to make two payments in that budget or if the other one can wait for the following budget, but anyway.
What was the commitment totally?
It's 410, 480, I think. And then this first check is 157, 152, 152. So we're paying 152 of our bill. And we will do this in installments and this is the Acadiana Crime Lab, we're not alone, goes by looking at your usage, looking at the size of your community. So it's something that we're all participating in.
Question.
I, I, I looked at the breakdown of parish's charge, I think I sent it to you Friday, and I thought.
Sent it all over.
I mean, it was pretty well distributed, you can tell where the high use rates are and who uses it more. So I mean, I thought it might have been unfair at first, but I thought it was well done, I don't know the mayor's opinion on it.
Goes by usage, so, you know. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
So why is this a council insurance proceeds?
Because that's, it fell from, manna from heaven, we ended up with a check, there was some insurance proceeds from a good while back, I didn't even know they were coming. And they walked in and, you know, we get the mail in the morning, they were like, we got a check, and I said, boy, I know what I can do with that. So we researched it to make sure it wasn't committed to anything else, and so just, you know, we were just fortunate.
Okay.
We would have had to find the money some other way, but, you know, take advantage of when you can.
Ma'am, is that the check that's usually presented to us?
No, totally, nothing, because, you know, that check that's usually presented to us in the past was budgeted as part of the insurance cost for the year. We're not gonna do it like that again, now we're gonna just have new money, new things, we're gonna do it a little differently. But no, this didn't come from any money that we've ever gotten before.
And one more thing to follow up with Ricky, I know you were checking to see if we were paying our fair share or more than our fair share and you said.
It was pretty evenly distributed.
Yeah.
By parish and population, right?
Based on the six parishes out there.
Based on your usage.
On usage, parish.
Yes, yeah, so we have a lot of usage right now.
How are we, how do we fare in the usage?
We weren't, we weren't the highest, we weren't the lowest, we were number three.
Okay, so it's Lafayette Parish, what's the second highest?
Appaloosa.
I think it was St. Landry.
St. Landry, that's one of my.
St. Landry?
Yeah. Or Appaloosa is one of them, but, you know, there were others and we went, you know.
St. Landry, Lafayette, Dennis.
Yeah.
I, I just looked at it because I was curious.
Yeah, me too.
Good question, Jackson. Thank you for following up.
Cause I wanted to make sure and sure enough, that's what they were.
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Has anybody, uh, any other areas started their payments?
I didn't ask. I didn't ask. I, I saw, I know that, uh, I knew somebody paid in full, but the amount was a lot lesser. Uh, you, you know, because some people are light on usage, let's put it that way. Uh, but I'm not positive. I didn't really, I just know that one person had paid the whole amount. And then when I looked it up, oh, yeah, I see why. Um, so I, I, I'm not sure of that.
So they, they do have matching funds on the state they can start with though?
Oh, yeah. We're not holding up. I'm, no, no, I know. I called the DA immediately and said, after we, you know, me, we cut up about it on the camera and I called him the next day, okay? I said, hey, why's the meeting? You know, uh, and we talked about it, but he understood our position. He was fine with it. It's, it's a couple of year project. But with what they have already, they're moving. So we're not holding anything up. And it's well needed. Anybody else? Say, um, please vote your machines. And when new budget comes, we'll, we'll, we'll address the rest of it. Thank y'all. Bobby.
Introduction of Special Ordinance Number twenty-two thirty-three, twenty-two forty-four thirty, an ordinance amending the budget to account for additional funds received from the mosquito control dispersments and setting for public hearing on August sixth, twenty-twenty-four.
This is the money that we get every year from the parish that is through mosquito control that goes to be dedicated only to drainage. We actually got a little more money this year, which is awesome. And so with it, this goes into our drainage pot. Our drainage pot is doing pretty well right now because we got the grant, um, to pull off, uh, Councilwoman Marcot's project. So that helped us, but all this money would go to drainage. We'll be pairing this money if we have to with the ARPA money, as you know, and it's kind of all related. We're about to bid out the next package on the canals that we're doing the canal cleaning throughout the whole city. Um, but this is wonderful to see that this war chest is built up so that whatever the ARPA money might fall short of, you know, we, we have this money to continue drainage work.
May I? Is this staying in two thousand twenty-four budget or is moving? This monies, this adjustment?
Well, we made the adjustment because it's more money, but it'll stay.
Are we gonna spend it all in two thousand twenty-four?
It just goes in the pot with the rest of it? No.
No.
That will go.
Fund balance.
Yeah, that'll go to fund balance because we'll, we'll have this money for, especially with the grant that we received. We should spend this money, you know, in the next two years probably.
Okay.
I don't know. Pretty good on fund balance though.
Yeah.
You might, you might take loan and then.
Well, what's helping us too is that y'all, y'all had the foresight to take the million dollars and clean the canals with the ARPA money. So it might last us for a few years. But it's good. We still need a lot of drainage work.
Cause those, those canals we've been cleaning throughout the city. Those monies are coming from this.
No, they're coming from ARPA. That's what I'm saying. All of them.
You had to put, you're not drainage money for that.
We put a million dollars from the ARPA money to clean all the canals in town. We could fall short. We've been in four packages. We could fall short the last package, but we have this money to, to fall back on.
To offset.
But we haven't even touched that. So we good, if you think about it, we're good on roads, we're good on drainage. You know, we have some areas that we still need help. We're not good on sewer. Sewer's a, a big issue. But what this is allowing us to do is move our efforts and our concentrations to other areas when, when you, when you see that you have this much money that you can actually keep attacking drainage.
Yeah, I was wondering about the ones that, uh, those drainage ditches that we've been cleaning out. If, if we don't have enough money, then you could use it for that.
And that's, that's my plan. Bid out the ARPA money because we have a deadline. We have to commit it this year. By the end of twenty-four, it has to all be committed. So if something happens with that and there was an issue or if we just fall short, we'll, we'll plug in some of these dollars.
Good, thank you.
Cause that's all it can be used for is drainage.
I was just gonna comment on that mosquito abatement program. See, man, that's a very good program in term, for what it does for the city and, and the rebates we get.
Every community, every municipality gets back a percentage, uh, that they don't use that you contribute. So.
Every municipality in, in this, in this, in this.
In the parish. Yeah, in the parish.
It's a parish wide tax.
Yes. Parish wide tax and whatever they don't spend is divided back to us.
I knew, I knew that because I served on mosquito control board, but they don't have this program all over the state.
Get this kind of money.
Right. They don't have this program all over the state, right?
No.
That's what I'm saying. This, this program was a good idea.
And lately we're getting back more money. I mean, let's.
Well, yeah.
We're getting back more money the last few years than we had previously gotten back. There was a time we didn't get back, you know, we've both been up here for a while. There were times that we did not get a lot of money back. So.
We collect a lot of money, but you didn't get it back.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But you caught us in sales taxes up in this fiscal year is why you receive more money.
Well, it's because way back when, as the mayor spoke, mosquito control had a contracting company.
It was just different.
Did the drainage.
Right.
And all that money went to that.
Right.
So now after they do mosquito control, with the spraying, none of that money goes to drainage. It goes to us to do the drainage.
Right.
So that's why I kind of asked. I'm glad you brought it up. I wasn't gonna be messing, but it seemed like there's always somebody trying to go after the mosquito control money, but it looks like we got a good program here. Well. Benefiting the city.
It is. When they were trying to go after, I'm just, I might be speaking out of school. If they wasn't spending that money for mosquitoes, they won't, why are we paying it? But people gotta understand they giving it to us.
Correct.
To take care of drainage so mosquitoes won't be where the water is.
Correct.
It was, as you've spoken, they wanted us to go down under mosquito control tax, take it away and just use it for mosquito control.
Correct.
And then we wouldn't be getting this money.
And we, but we'll still be responsible for cleaning the land.
That's right.
Yes.
So.
Anything I get clean, we have more mosquitoes.
Yeah. So it's kind of. One thing about the program, as a city, it always, we always did a great job. I don't care. Well, I'm not, I can't speak for the parish, but I can tell for the city, we did a great job. We had issues, doing such a good job, the parish couldn't handle some of our drainage because their things are not.
That's coming again.
Well, I, I am a little concerned right now because we're cleaning all the main drainage canals in the whole city. And with the money that we have, I mean, you did elect a contractor. I don't plan on quitting. So we're gonna clean and continue to do drainage all over and a volume of water is gonna leave this town that hasn't been. We have some canals we're cleaning that we, you can ask our city attorney. We don't think we ever cleaned them. Never. Like, you know how long never is? We, we have some that we've never cleaned, so.
My life. I find, I find with big rains, we are doing better on the streets.
We got a ways to go, but.
Now it might just be sticking, standing the canals and not going out.
Yeah, yeah, well, we do what we can do.
We got them all over. But at the program, you, you right.
I know, we have made good use of it.
It, it came a long way and thank goodness they didn't get too much pressure to take it away.
Right.
Cause they were trying to.
Exactly.
Exactly right.
I was on the board when they tried.
Yeah.
And it's like, what are y'all doing?
Yeah.
When I got here, I was able to see, wow, how great.
I was on this board when they tried.
We utilized it.
It was tough.
So.
Yes, ma'am.
As far as the mosquito spraying, do we know that we're still getting the same number of sprays throughout the city? Um, we haven't had anybody complaining about.
And when you call, they go. And if you say, you know, you can even call them and say, I have an outdoor function. Can you come and spray? That happens. I mean, they doing it. They're doing a, a good job. We're, we're getting spraying. Uh, I do know quite a few people have called and said, well, I can call them. And I'm like, yeah, if you call, you know, you got a function outside, call them. They'll go and spray. And I mean, those things are happening.
Okay, good.
I, I'll tell you, her, her, the director does an awesome job with that program. And like mayor says, you can call over there. I got a pool party. Not to reiterate what he said, I got a pool party. We have a graduation party and they'll go spray.
That's right.
And the only time they couldn't help is with those termites.
Yeah.
They said they don't spray for termites. But people calling for that man.
Yeah, that's a little.
But I learned a lot from them about the Formosa termites.
Oh, yeah. And a few months ago, they were swarming and they were. Yeah, they can't help us with that. It's mosquitoes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five C.
Introduction of Special Ordinance Number twenty-two thirty-three, twenty-two forty-four thirty-one, an ordinance amending the budget for street paving slash pepper plex audit adjustments and setting for public hearing on August sixth, twenty-twenty-four.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Boy, that was everybody at once. Councilwoman Martin Lewis and, uh, Councilman, was that you, Dandoff?
Me, huh? When I say pepper plex, I get excited. I'm like.
So, anyways, thank y'all. Thank y'all. Any discussion?
So.
Yes, ma'am.
For the paving of the street that wasn't included in, I mean, am I reading this correctly? This is for street paving that wasn't included when, in the road?
No, we're just doing some budget adjustments because, uh, that's the money we had for the road. But we are moving money around and making budget adjustments to meet the criteria so that next year we don't have audit fines.
Okay.
So what you're gonna find in the next few meetings is a lot of things that just to clean it up, that's why we say by the auditors. There's a lot of money that was, uh, just needs to come before us, um, to be moved the right way.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
General question, but, but these audit adjustments we're making, we're, we're gonna see them in the new budget, I'm assuming, assuming. That's the, the claim, right? As we're moving forward.
These are, um, right, these adjustments are adjusting the twenty-twenty-four budget.
Correct, correct, right.
So, but I. When we do the new budget, we're gonna take.
Yeah, they'll either get spent or this year, or if they're not, they'll carry over to the next year. Yeah. And it's just to clean us up. That's, that's all we're trying to do.
Okay.
Just housekeeping, okay.
Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machine. Thank you very much.
See, I got you up early.
Thank you. All right. Oh, seven A, Madam Clerk.
Babette Lestrapps to present the monthly budget to actual report for, for November first, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, hi. So this is for the period of November one through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four, which is eight months into the fiscal year or sixty-seven percent of the, the year. Um, general fund, we have budgeted thirty-two million, um, in revenues. We've actually received fifteen million, uh, about fifteen million five hundred thousand. So we have forty-eight percent of our budget. The expenditures for general fund, we have thirty-seven million budgeted. Um, actual is sixteen-five. So we have forty-four, forty-five percent of our budget there. The sales tax fund, we have ten million, um, budgeted. Um, we've received about six point eight million. So we're at sixty-five percent of our budget. On, we have fifteen million, um, in expenditures budgeted. We've spent six, um, point one million. So we're like around forty percent of the budget there. The pepper, uh, pepper plex, the TIF district, we have eight hundred thousand budgeted in revenue. Uh, we received four hundred and eighty-three thousand. So it's sixty percent of our budget. And, um, on the expenditure side, we have nine hundred and sixty-four thousand budgeted. We had two hundred and twenty thousand. So we only like a twenty-three percent of our budget. On the public safety fund, we have four point two million budgeted in revenue. We've received two point four million. So we have fifty-eight percent of our budget. On the expenditures, we have four point two million in expenditures budgeted. We had two point one million. So we have fifty percent of the budget. On the Highway fourteen TIF district, we have three hundred and fifty-five thousand of revenues budgeted. We had a hundred and ninety-four thousand. So we had fifty-five percent of our budget. On the expenditures, we have one point one million, um, budgeted and we only, um, expended, um, one, uh, one thousand five hundred. So we have point one three percent of our budget. The Spanish Trail, um, TIF district, we budgeted thirty-one thousand in revenue. We actually received nineteen thousand. So we're at sixty-one percent of our budget. And then on the expenditure side for that, we only budgeted two hundred and eighty-four dollars. We've actually spent a hundred and forty-two dollars. So we had fifty percent of that budget. All right, Parks and Recreation, we have two point one million budgeted in revenue. We had eight hundred and eighteen thousand actual. So we had thirty-eight percent of our budget. The expenditures for Parks and Recreation, we budgeted one point nine million. We had nine hundred thousand. So we had forty-eight percent of our budget there. The Pepper Plax, we budgeted three point nine million in revenue. Uh, we had four hundred and seventy-one thousand. So which is twelve percent of our budget. We budgeted expenditures of three point nine million. We had seven hundred and ten thousand. So we had eighteen percent of our budget. On the Public Works Fund, we budgeted three point three million in revenues. We had one point seven million. So we are at fifty-one percent of our budget. We budgeted three point seven, um, million in expenditures. We had one point eight million, which is forty-seven percent of our budget. In the garbage fund, we budgeted four point two million in revenue. We had two point two million. So we're about fifty-one percent of our budget. For revenues on expenditures, we have four point three million budgeted. We had two point five million. So it's fifty-seven percent of our budget. Excuse me. The section eight vouchers, we have one point five million budgeted in revenue. We received one point three million. So we're at eighty percent of our budget. On the expenditures, we budgeted one point six million. We had one point two million. So we're at seventy-eight percent of our budget there. Then on wastewater, we budgeted fourteen million in revenue. We received three point four million. So we're at twenty-four percent of our budget. We, for wastewater, we budgeted twenty million in expenditures. We, um, expended, um, three point eight million. So we had nineteen percent of the budget there. Anyone have any questions on any of these?
Lighten up bigger numbers.
Yeah, no, the few that we need to just kind of tell people what's going on. The reason we haven't spent much money on the TIF, we're waiting and we do have a big project to do that is sewer, uh, related. That's the bore for the Love Truck Stop. So that's in there. The Pepper Plex, well, we're still waiting on the state. Uh, I have some good news that it looks like they're going to really work with us. Combine the million dollars that's coming for this year's capital lay with the one point five that we've been waiting on since January. Okay, so we've been waiting since January. That's been a little slow, but now to, to try to get that money moving, we are getting some help and we are speeding up in a new way that we're gonna combine both of them because, uh, and then have the two point five and just do one project. And there is some, uh, efficiency and you pick up some, you know, a bigger project, you, you, you should come off better. We're gonna do it anyway. So now it'll just be one project and we'll be able to get it over with. So that is kind of why that's there. And then the sewer fund, remember we're taking out five million dollars that we told the state that we couldn't take because we didn't want to raise sewer user fees because we do have poverty in our community. So that's kind of why those numbers are, are lagging that far behind. But it's good to see, you know, a, a lot of good numbers. Questions, comments? Anybody?
You answered me in the wastewater fund. It was just, I saw some.
Yeah.
Dragging, a little bit dragging.
Yeah, and, and like I said, we have more adjustments.
Lot of makeup to do for a month, but if the five million came out, that's why they made the adjustment.
Yeah. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Babette.
All right, Madam Clerk? Eight A.
Discussion related to the proper procedure to dispose of grass clippings.
This is a discussion on the item that we all talk about quite often. Had some graphics up last meeting of people blowing grass in the road and they're cutting the grass, mostly commercial, but some people in front of their houses. So, uh, we also do have a general fine of five hundred dollars. And part of the reason that we need to have this discussion is that I would like to see the police department begin to give people fines and tickets when it comes to that. You know, we're, we're getting the public word out. That's the point of this discussion, but, you know, it falls under the criteria of that general fine of five hundred dollars. So at some point, you know, if this council sees fit, because it's going in the drains, it's, it's clogging up our system. Uh, it's death for a motorcycle. Go ride a motorcycle through those fresh clippings, you know, you're gonna wipe out. Uh, it's something that we keep talking about. So let's have a discussion. Anybody? Yes, sir.
So, so my concern is, and I think, I think it's, it's a pertinent problem in the city and I think it, it's something that needs to be addressed. But, but as a government, we can initiate these rules and regulations and increase fines, but can we truly, do we have the manpower? Can we police this issue? Can we go out and enforce it? You know, can we make a difference? And I see the chief walked in, but I'm just asking, curious.
Rusty can.
Rusty. I can't, I can't ask you again.
No.
No, I mean, it needs to be done. I just don't want to put a burden that's extra that we, you know, we may be hampering you as the chief, please.
No, as, as, as the mayor knows, um, and, and just so happens that, that Lieutenant Mo is here doing, yeah, I gotta come up.
We're looking for y'all. Camera, don't go back that far.
Hey, you came in. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can't hide back there. Um, just so happens that Lieutenant Mo is doing security here tonight and, uh, he is actually assigned to work with compliance, uh, to work on issues like this, which is, uh, codes and then those types of violations. So Lieutenant Mo works with, uh, with the fourth floor on, on dealing with those issues. And as we get enough information that says that this has violated this ordinance, this code, he then gets with Nicole Burke, the city prosecutor, and then they issue a citation to have them charged. So yes, we do have the manpower to do it.
So quick question. So he passes by, or I pass by and I report that there's grass on the street in front of this house. I don't know who cut the grass. Who gets the ticket?
Well, that, that's, that's why one with, when it comes to the code enforcement, uh, the city inspector is the one that, that first takes a view of the complaints. Um, when he feels that something has violated code, then he gets Lieutenant Mo to go with him. If I'm, understand that right, Rusty? Yes. Lieutenant Mo then goes. Lieutenant Mo then goes out there and if it's somebody that that's not in compliance, they they have a process. Basically, the code enforcement officer, which the city inspector, would be letting them know that this is in violation if you do it or you don't clean it up, whatever it is, whatever the issue is. If they don't address the issue and it happens or continues to happen, then they would be in violation, subject to be fined.
So I guess.
So be cited and then deal with the city court at that point.
So the what I'm trying to understand is if um if I don't know who cut the grass. And let's say, is the homeowner gonna be the person cited? Because maybe the contractor's gone. Uh, so I would, I mean, it seems like if I have a contractor that's cutting my yard and they leave grass, it's still my responsibility to make sure it's picked up. If I if the contractor's nowhere around.
Right, true, but it should be the con- in other words, we're gonna start slow with this and there would be a warning period, there would be, you know, we've never done this before. So we would have a warning period, we would have to do some social media education. But to me, it's the contractors, in other words, if you cut grass for a living, we will have to make you have notice of this. We can't burden Rusty with tomorrow morning, go out and ride around town and do nothing but that. So there'd have to be an education piece, number one, a warning time. And then the the third thing is, which might not be that difficult, would be to reach out to all the commercial grass cutting contractors. Because to me, you know, if I do something wrong in my construction business or my design firm, you're coming after me. If if to me, it's the same thing with, you know, with anybody who has a business. If Marlo's haircut doesn't come out good, then I'm going after anybody else. So for me, I feel that it should be the the contract.
But it's not, okay, I cut my own grass and I didn't do it. So I mean, you don't know who, the cut, the grass is already cut. So who's gonna get the citation? You gonna come to me and ask me? I mean.
Were we gonna have to catch him in the act because it's a crime? In other words, we would catch them. The the point of this is to get it out there, catch people in the act. We'll warn them at first, but if you have a contractor who's riding around town cutting ten yards a day or whatever, however many they cut, okay, five, eight, ten yards a day. It ain't gonna take long to run into that guy again.
Okay, but there are some homeowners doing the same thing. Okay, so I'm just, I want, I guess, as a homeowner, if I hire somebody to do a job at my house and they make a mess at my house. Then it seems like I'm responsible for it. I'm the one who has to say, you better not do it again because I'm gonna fire you. That's my responsibility. How otherwise, how are you gonna enforce this? I don't see a a way to enforce unless you absolutely catch them in the act, that means we gotta ride around town. It feels like if you see it, because I I turn in people all the time for cutting their grass and just leaving stuff on the on the street.
And currently, when you turn, when anybody turns them in, we send them a letter, but that's just falling on nothing. I mean, it's not working.
Okay, so if 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 someone, and I'm just trying to make sure I understand. Let's, I'm gonna use my own house because I live at a corner. If 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 the police pass by and they see grass clippings all around my house, the only person they can cite is me.
On on the first occasion, um there there's a process with this, the the first occasion is the warning.
Absolutely.
So so it would be a warning so the homeowner knows that this is not something that you can do, right? If it would happen again, then obviously it takes the next escalated step. You've been warned about this, you've been, and and now it goes to a potential citation at that point.
That's my point.
We're not just, to answer your questions, we're not just walking up and writing somebody a citation.
No, 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 I I don't mean that. I I realize it's a warning, it's education. Let's say that part's done. What I'm saying is you have to, this has to be a fine to the homeowner because. Because if you warned me, you come and you see my grass like that, maybe I didn't cut my own grass. Then I gotta tell my contractor, don't do it again, but if he does it again, it's still my responsibility because the guy's gone.
But but then again, the the process becomes where it falls in the city court at the point where we cite because it's the warning's been issued. They're educated in the fact that this can't be done. If it's done again, then obviously they don't have no knowledge of it.
When you say they, who do you, who do you mean when you say they?
And then when we send it over to city court, then she would bring the parties in and if that party's to be explained better before that prosecution per se to pay a fine. Then that that's where it all gets sorted out, this due process.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get an answer for is, who do you mean when you say they?
Well, depending on on who it is that's responsible. If it's the property owner, then that's something that we, when when we get, in other words, when code enforcement goes out, Rusty gets involved after that point when the warnings are issued. And then the according to whatever uh ordinance you have, code ordinance you have, if it says the property owner, and I don't have that in front of me, but. We are, we have to develop that. What we have is it's illegal to do this and it falls under the, we we're gonna have to work on that. This is why it's a discussion item tonight. Right. Uh, because we got a work to do, um, you know, and I still say that the commercial contractors.
I think they should.
Have to be, have to know.
I don't know how you can enforce that. You guys would have.
And look, this is not, I don't want to braise everybody's expectation that Officer Mo is gonna ride around town looking for grass.
We got more important things to do.
Yeah, we we, if we were a community that all we had to do was worry about grass, we wouldn't be paying that much of usage on our crime lab, okay? We do have other issues. So for me, it's put the rule in place, educate people, hope some people will just maybe quit doing it. The other part of it is, it's it's Officer Mo, but I mean, if other officers see it too. If it's, if you're riding by and it's happening, then at least you're gonna stop somebody. You're gonna catch that, you're not gonna catch them all, but you're gonna catch some people. And the easiest ones to catch are probably gonna be the commercial contractor because they're out there cutting so many yards. So at least if we find someone, and I'm not looking to, I'm not looking for revenue, I'm not looking, I just want the grass to quit going in our drains and quit making the streets unsafe. So if you ride around and you catch some and you get the word out, we're doing much better than we are now that we're just sending a dumb letter that, no offense, I thought that was gonna work. That we send to people and and they're not listening.
Man.
So.
Yes.
Uh, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, you had the floor.
Okay, so the only thing I will say about that is based on what I'm hearing tonight. Doesn't sound like we're gonna make a major impact, it's just we're putting a rule in place that we really can't enforce. You're only gonna get a small portion of the people that, because if you're not catching these people in the act. The grass could still be there. So then what are you gonna do, just pass by and let it go? Because I don't see the guy standing there.
Same thing we always do, which is vacuum it up with the vacaul truck.
Did I say don't put the rule in place?
Well, it's a step and we have some people in place to do something. If you think that people don't get away with crime in any commu-, you know, if I if I focus on any one issue that we would give a ticket or any one of our many, many compliance issues. You can't say we catch them all.
No, but.
Of course, we don't, but but we trying to put some, and we haven't put anything in place. And the first thing is the discussion, the next thing is bring it to the ordinance committee and work out ordinance group and work, it's not a committee. Uh, the ordinance meeting and work out some solution and try to bring it back. So do I think we're gonna catch everyone? It's not the highest priority on our list, but I'd like to catch some of them because maybe we get the word out that a few people get fines and then people turn their lawn more. The whole thing is, this is so crazy, just turn your lawn more in the other direction. So, no, it's true. So I'm hoping that a couple of fines, i- if some people get caught, they quit. And if some people finally say, okay, I I guess I didn't think this was serious and that letter they've been sending me, I've been throwing in the trash. Maybe they'll just turn their lawn more in the other direction. That's the real, you wanted the real answer, the real answer is turn your lawn more around. But we haven't had any any success with that.
So.
So it's just worth a shot.
Okay, so.
If we don't think it's worth a shot, cool, move on to the next.
Okay, so I'm 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 gonna, I'm gonna make a comparison.
Okay.
The noise ordinance. These folks driving around with these, you know, boom, 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 all over the place. How many tickets have we given out for that?
We sure stop a lot of people with parties and we sure stop a lot of people.
I'm talking about driving around. I mean, it's one of those things that we included that, but that's very hard to police.
It is, but the noise ordinance lets us do some good. I mean, it's not a debate between me and you, but it does.
No.
The noise ordinance lets us stop people that are trying to go to sleep, people are having a party, people live next door. So some of the noise ordinance works a lot better than.
We included a piece that we really can't enforce. So I'm trying to get us to make sure that when we, as we talk, we're discussing this. I just want to make sure that we understand that we need to put things in place that we can enforce. Otherwise, it's a waste of the paper that we keep printing everywhere.
It it does do some good because actually I I I stopped somebody the other day that I was, almost blew my windows off of off of the thing and uh they got a taste of how I felt about it, the motivation I stopped them.
Did you give them a ticket?
I didn't, but.
Case closed.
Understand, but understand.
I knew that was the question.
Is that I had, I had it documented, I had it documented with my dispatch, told the person that if if we catch him again, it's in the system that they will be cited. You know, obviously, I was going somewhere, so I'd at least.
You have time, right.
Pull them over and deal with the issue of having them lower their radio before they got too far and aggravated somebody else.
Okay, I just.
But it does give us some teeth to do that.
But as someone who lives on a corner and hears all the loud music, I'm just telling you, it's not, it's it's, let's not do the grass thing the way we've done that, okay?
Look, if it matters at all, I had one complaint, one person did get a ticket that I know of for riding around with loud music and they were so upset about it, but there's nothing I can do.
We we do cite, to answer your question. And I would have had, I would have had that person cited if I had, if I had time on my hands to do it. Because it was, it was really up not, it was too far. It was shadow, it was rattling my windows.
Okay, I'm just, I just want to make sure whatever we put in place, we can enforce.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I'm saying, this doesn't sound like it's enforceable.
Point taken, point taken, yes, sir.
Well, as you mentioned, being in contracted business, when I do work for a customer and I I get permits, if I don't get it, they find me.
Right.
And they do. They don't care. But anyway, if someone's building a house for a homeowner, they do it wrong, the contractor gets fined. And I believe, like, my business air conditioning, we, these people kind of hang together. If you get a contract lawn service and you bust them, it won't take long before it gets out. I'm telling you, that's the truth, because they all hang together. My guy cuts my grass, he puts it in the street, then he gets his little blower and he blows it all back into the yard. That's right or wrong, but it's not on the street.
It's not in the driveway.
But I don't think a homeowner, when he hires, she hired or him, hires someone, might not know all that. But the people that's getting the permit to operate, do they get a permit to operate in the city cutting grass?
I don't think so.
They don't.
They can just do it.
Anybody does it.
Okay.
Occupational license.
So Dan, the difference with your your example about you actually doing work for a homeowner and you get in trouble. It's because you're actually not, you're not violating a city ordinance. These people are violating the city ordinance, that's the difference. You can, they, yeah, you're gonna be responsible, but you're not violating the city ordinance. Now I'm violating the city ordinance.
Thing with the city, I have some things I have to meet with the city.
But my point is that it's between you and that homeowner, this person is throwing grass on the street, that's a, he's violating a city ordinance.
But he he should be, I'm saying.
If a contractor does work and we go inspect it and it doesn't meet code, now he's violating our ordinance because we have an artist in place.
Okay, but guess what? He's going, but he's gonna work with the 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 uh homeowner, not with you. Y'all gonna come back and inspect, but they're not working with you, they're working with their homeowner.
Right, but they can be fined if it's terrible enough or if they don't follow the steps.
If they getting paid to do a service.
Or we can reject, there there is some teeth. If if uh, I don't want to pick on the air conditioning trade, but if someone puts an air conditioning system in and puts it in completely out of compliance, which could happen. Then they gotta rip it out and pay for it again. They, we won't.
Not the homeowner.
Not the homeowner, you know, the contractor, we would reject it. Uh, if something could be so bad, we say we turn the electricity off, I mean, you know.
Agreed, but you're turning off the electricity for the homeowner. So it's between the homeowner and the provider. This case, this guy's doing a service for them and they're breaking a city ordinance.
Well, if you don't get a permit to do that air conditioning work, then when you come in, you're fined and a permit costs you double. Because that's between us because they broke the rule.
We don't have a permit for people going to cut grass.
I mean.
I I get what you're saying though.
There are ways that the city does get involved and does penalize.
I believe that the.
The police department penalizes you if you don't follow the rules.
Job, and I'm not talking the homeowner, so if someone's getting paid for the job, they should be liable. If it's a fine, ordinance, whatever. Now, I'm not talking about someone that lives in a house and cut their own grass.
No, totally different.
Of course, I don't want them to be fined five hundred dollars. But the people that go through forty yards a day and they do it because they're as fast as they can cut a yard to make their money to go to the next yard. That's the ones that we need to slow down. And I'm telling you, that's, I I say that's fifty percent of the people in this town.
Problem because I ride.
Everybody, when they retire, they go cut grass.
Yeah.
Everybody goes to cut grass.
I have to go around town every day, all day long, as do many of you, we all around our town. It's mostly commercial contractors that I see blowing it all over the place, more than the homeowners.
I see homeowners.
Okay. You, you done? Okay. You, I know.
Jeff.
Go around.
Jeff. You're looking at a question, I I haven't read the city ordinance recently, but does the city ordinance govern the residence or does it govern the contract? That's my concern.
I don't know.
I didn't read it, I read it one time, but it's way back.
I'm on my phone, I don't know.
I'm gonna tell you neither, it doesn't say much. It says you can't, that's why we here to have a discussion to see if we want to do something because it doesn't say much. It says you shall not put the grass killed clippings. But it doesn't say too much else, I mean, it's so vague.
Send them a letter and that's it.
Well, we just made up send them a letter, we just decided to try to fix the problem, we'd send them a letter. We didn't pass an ordinance, we would send a letter, we just decided as a group, we'd send a letter.
Right.
So we don't have everything in place we would need to do anything, except that it says it's unlawful and it falls under the number category that there's a five hundred dollar fine. A whole, whole bunch of things in our code book that it doesn't say during, when you read it, that it's a fine, it just gives you a section number. When you go and look it up, a zillion things fall under that section number for a five hundred dollar fine.
So currently, the five hundred dollar fine goes to the residents under the ordinance?
I don't know who it goes to, that's why we we.
It's gone, no one's been fined.
And no one has ever been fined.
Well, yeah, I, we'll take a look at it, but I think it probably goes to the person who actually throws the stuff in the street.
Mm-hmm, yeah, because it says you're not supposed to throw it in the street.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it's the homeowner, I think it's the person who actually does.
Threw it in the street.
The thing that's prohibited.
It could be the homeowner.
Yeah, if he does it, does it himself, yeah.
Right by my house, it's the homeowner and I send letters to him all the time. Nothing helps.
No, I know, that's why we decided to have a discussion to see.
That's so crazy. Why didn't you just?
Exactly.
Turn it the other way.
And I I, he sees me taking pictures.
Yes, sir.
He doesn't care.
I think, I think.
I know who you're talking about.
I I think, I think.
Yeah, I know you know.
I I think I can help you all all out, I'm listening to y'all.
Hey, give us the wisdom.
First of all, no, first of all, you 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 made it sound like like one of the ten commandments, thou shall not.
It's kind of how it says.
That's weird, but that's.
It's just, I'm just having fun. Number eleven, bro.
Thou shall not leave grass. Thou shall not leave grass on the sidewalk to go in the drain. Yes, but really, if you look at it, it's just about awareness. Because if you think about it, none of the laws that are written in society can be enforced one hundred percent. It's about awareness, even tonight, letting people know, those who gonna be watching it, gonna know that, oh, grass is a big issue. So having it on an agenda to discuss it is one thing. The next thing is, like you said, how do you enforce it? But there are so many laws that are unenforceable, but they're laws. At least we're giving people awareness right now to know that, hey, this law is coming or this uh enforcement is coming, rather. Uh, be careful, I know Dan is adamant about it and adamant about the contractors doing it. You adamant about your neighbors doing it, right? So that's where, that's.
I'm adamant that the 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 person who's responsible for the grass, whether or not a contractor cut it or not, is the homeowner because they hired that person.
I think, I think, I'm not gonna get into that discussion until that time, until that time.
And it will come back.
And it will come back.
Or maybe it won't.
But I think it's more about the awareness that it's that it's not good to leave grass on the on the side of the road.
That's absolutely correct.
Than it is about who get punished for it, at this point, we ain't there yet, you know. So that's my balance, you can do, it's a lot of things you can do right now that they got laws for that pe- people ain't gonna get. People been breaking little laws all their life and they ain't gonna never get caught because that's what they good at. So they gonna have some people that's gonna get slipped slipped through the cracks with the grass. But like Dan said, it's gonna change, it's gonna make an impact because the word is gonna get out. So I think just this discussion right here, if we firm about how serious an issue it is, we'll get some, we'll get some resolve even at this point. Not 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 there yet to who, you know.
Just like, I don't think it should be five hundred dollars.
It's a lot of mon- it's a lot of.
Yeah, that's crazy, that's crazy, that that's, you know.
That's a lot of money, right? I agree.
Money, so.
Give one of them out, you have.
Well, yeah, we're not doing that.
A social media presence.
So basically, what we've had is a good discussion. Anybody else have anything to add? Yes, ma'am, I I was wondering.
Y'all realize that Rusty's just one person, right?
Yeah, we do.
Y'all have him all over the place.
Oh, we know that, yeah.
Do you need help, Rusty?
Well, that's not up to Rusty, that's not up to Rusty.
Um, but no, he does the the school's own speed tickets.
We don't have an officer who doesn't need help.
Yeah, it's just, it's a lot, so.
Busy clientele.
It it to me will be difficult for that to be one more job for him to do in particular.
Well, I think if you put an ordinance in, if if we go that route, okay? If we feel it's important enough, and and we ain't gotta decide that tonight, that's why it's just a discussion. If we feel it's important enough, we've done some good tonight by raising the awareness, at least people see we're talking about it. If it's something we go forward with, then we go to the ordinance committee, then we put something together and then it does what we always do, it comes back to us and we spend a couple of hours and we iron it out. Because we're very good at doing that, this government at work. So one step at a time, tonight was just to have that discussion and talk about, you know, the possibility and and I'll just get your feedback like I always do, you know. And I have, and we'll just continue the discussion. Yes, ma'am.
So do we want to take this to the ordinance group?
I'm gonna let everybody, like I normally do, tell me. In other words, let me, let's see, let's see what the discussion brings.
Well, let me see what I, my comment is, is that, um.
Let me wait.
Is that we've done a lot of work on drainage and it's improved. Hurricane season is here and we've had a lot of rain so far, and so far, so good. We have had a lot of grass grow up very tall lately. And people are cutting their grass, or we are cutting the grass, you know, the city's cutting the grass. So we do not, it can cause a serious problem and hinder our progress with the drainage and clog the drains up. Then they're gonna be complaining about it flooded on the street and, you know, this, that and the other. So it would be a good thing that we do address this issue and, and take that little variant out of the, the drainage issues that, you know, we've worked so hard to deal with and are working still to deal with.
And people don't realize how much money we spend with the vacaul trucks. I, I mean, I have a crew that never quits and sometimes we have to borrow the truck from sewer and go back and forth so that I have two or three running around, because we have so mu- if we would not be cleaning those drains the way we are, we would be, you know, really in a bind. So, yeah, it's, it's an important issue.
And the tree sweeper.
And the tree sweeper.
And I'm not finished with my comment.
No, I, I didn't think you were.
And I really feel that the letters go out, the letters go out to the address where the incident has occurred. If we pass on the street and, you know, you, you've reported people, I've reported people too. And they get the letter and they do nothing about it. That's their fault, that they didn't do anything. It's not the person that cut the grass, unless they did it. But even if somebody else cut the grass, they get the letter. They should then in turn tell that person, I got this letter and if you continue to do this, I'm gonna hire somebody else, because the grass can't go in the street.
That's right.
So you can't just go around, you know, finding people because you see their lawn service there um, in every instance, cause lots of times they're gone.
Yep.
But the grass is still there. So we do have to deal with the homeowner in order to inform those people that they've done some of the wrong things and they need to suffer a consequence with that homeowner.
That's right.
So that's the way I'm feeling about it, but we do need to address this issue.
Councilor Broussard.
Dan. Why you brought this up years ago where it's a botheration to me now?
What? What you talking about?
All that grass in the street, I've been seeing since you brought it up.
When I brought it up?
A couple of years ago, you, with a main one. I stopped and talked to contractors blowing grass in the street. You know, bank, at the banks and all that commercial places. I get out and see what the hell you doing. Four and five times I've stopped. But then it brings it back on me when I'm edging my grass, I gotta get out with the lawnmower and push it back in my yard. You know, so nobody gonna report me, but Dan, you gave me a bad habit.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bruce.
I can't.
But.
But it's a bad, it's a bad thing. It's really bad when they blow it all the way in the middle of the street. I got a bunch of neighbors myself, can name it. They don't like the leaves, they blow it in the middle of the street. I can name you that, but, um, it's a problem, but Dan, you made it a bad habit for all of us now to catch on to this idea.
I'm sorry I did that. But look, if I can speak, it's not about the grass in the street, it's about the grass in the sewer. I, I lost a flip flop one time cleaning out a sewer on Trotter Street, cause it makes a mesh. Let's don't make this, cause people could say, y'all have more important things to do, worry about my grass in the street. It's not about that. It's about the sewer. And when that grass gets wet.
Yep.
It makes a mat. Let's, let's, let's say while we're doing this, it's not about having a clean street. It's about having clean sewer.
Right.
Uh, drainage line. And it does mat up and, and, and when it matches those little, cause those cracks are not long in those, in those drainage things. The older days, a lot of surface drainers had those open drainers where the grass went through. We have a lot of ones now just has the little slits in it. And that, that's the problem. But the problem is way back when. I didn't make the problem. I was trying to fix the problem, Mr. Bruce.
You've been great, you've been bringing it up for years.
And I didn't put this on an agenda. Just, my name's not there, but it's a problem. I'm just, I'm just.
Compliment you on it, but bring it to my attention.
Well, we'll, we'll work on it.
All right. Thank y'all. Good discussion as always. Now we move on to councilman's remarks.
So do we wanna do something or not?
I think we do, but we, we, we do it based on the homeowner.
Well, we need a copy of the, of the.
Yeah, we'll keep moving on it.
If you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am. It's too long.
Discussion tonight.
It's, yeah, it's just discussion. Yeah, it just says thou shall.
On the agenda for the meeting.
Yes, okay. So we'll keep moving on that. Now we'll go to councilman's remarks and we'll start with you.
Yeah, before I do something else wrong, huh, Mr. Bruce? Hey, huh, mayor, go ahead.
I'll be back.
I can't, I can't ask you if you're not here. So, how's the weather been?
Hot.
It's been hot, it's been hot. Um, but no, I wanted to give a compliment to somebody, but I wanted the mayor to hear it, so. He'll be back, huh?
Oh, he'll come back?
He'll come back.
Pass baton on?
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you want me to go?
Are y'all all ready? Tomorrow's the day, the ones that's gotta start signing up.
Right.
Yep.
For election, you know?
Are you running?
Yeah, I'm running.
Okay.
You say y'all. Yeah, like.
Some, some are running.
No, but you were saying it like you weren't including it.
No, no, I'm running.
You should've said we.
We, I'm sorry, y'all, me. If I make y'all here alive, I will be, yeah. You know, but, um, this could be something.
You're in your seat next time around, you'll have somebody else sitting here. I won't be here bothering you.
He's sad.
Me too.
He never bothered me.
I'll come and visit. I'll wave at you guys.
Just think if you had four years of me.
What?
That would've been fun.
You only had like six months of me.
Yeah.
Or twenty years of me.
Oh, yeah, twenty years, like he had of me. Oh, yeah.
Dustin was great, but I've enjoyed you too.
Well, thank you. Dustin lived next door to me, I taught him everything he knew. No, we were, we were neighbors. I'm not, I'm joking.
That's why he was voting like he was voting. We need to talk.
We really were neighbors.
Hey, we in councilman remarks, Mr. Doyle.
Okay, well, I'm trying, okay, well, I was gonna ask the mayor, cause he might know. Um, there it is. Man, we had, we had a little good conversation about it.
Oh, that's good.
Um, one thing I wanna do, we're talking about compliance and things. Uh, I have nothing but good things to say about Matt. When Matt goes out there and tells someone they are, they are not in compliance or something, people even saying that he was really good about doing it and how he handled it. Not saying everybody else in the city, but that's a tough job, you know, being in compliance. Cause when you're gone, you're gonna tell them something normally bad that they not, and he's doing a very great job. I wanna let you know that.
I am with him at times. I've watched that guy de-escalate people, like he, he has a skill. He really does. He's got a bedside manner, the skill. I've had people come to my office screaming and I said, let's go upstairs.
Yeah.
And that guy melts him and he just does it. He's very good at people and he's, uh, reasonable.
And, and, and he, he's pretty fresh at it compared. So I wanna say that and I wanted you to be here so you would.
Good, thank you.
And the second thing is, I know we have an ordinance about grass after eighteen inches.
Twelve.
Twelve?
Twelve.
It's twelve.
Okay.
It's twelve.
Grass versus flower beds.
We, we don't regulate a flower bed.
But flower beds, I'm talking about bushes, if it's full of grass, do we still call it a flower bed? Or can we address that?
I know where you're going with that.
Uh, you know where I'm going.
I know where you're going with that.
Yeah.
I see some of that too.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, just a question, maybe we can ask Matt. Cause if you have grass this long and you cut it in a flower bed this long with grass, same grass, just different height.
So.
I mean, I'm not a horticulturist. I, you, you bet I'll be able to identify the plant.
Can I just try?
Now we're really getting into weeds.
But you, you understand? So, so the flower bed's a part of your yard? That's, that's truly.
The only thing separates is the little.
That's right, so I would think it's.
We might wanna look into that ordinance and, because when they address that, I think they should address the whole twelve inches, um, in your yard. That's just.
Well, that's, that's interesting. Thank you.
Well, thank y'all. I'm, thank you, man, I'm done.
All right, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, I actually have two very positive things to talk about today. One is, at least it's gonna be positive, being not to Freddie. Um, you guys could go on the legislative site and look for Act number seven eighteen, our old cars act passing was signed by the governor. So now, what this means for the public is that if you have an old car in your yard, that's over twenty-five years old and it is full of grass and, or just sitting in the front yard and you are not dealing with it and your neighbors are complaining to the council people about it, you're gonna have to get rid of it or we're gonna pick it up. So I just wanna, that was exciting to know that we now have a tool we can use to kinda clean up, continue to clean up our city, cause that's a big problem in our city. We got a lot of vacant lots, well, they're not vacant, cause they got old cars on them sitting there and nobody's dealing with it. And it's really taking the property, property values down for the people that live around that. And so now we'll be able to address that. So thank you, uh, I worked with, um, Representative Marcus Bryant on that. And, um, it was signed, it was approved by the representatives, the senate, and then it was signed by the governor. So excited about that. Second thing is, is that for all of our senior citizens, I want you guys to mark your calendar for September nineteenth. Um, we're going to have a senior citizen Zatiko Dan slash Bingo at the Weston Park. So we hope that everybody will come out and enjoy. There's gonna be a band playing Zatiko. Um, and we're hoping that if our senior center is ready, we could actually do a tour to show, let people go through and see the new senior center at the time. That's what I was kinda thinking in the back of my head, but I didn't know if the dates were gonna line up. But this is, um, this Zatiko Bingo thing is a lot of fun and I hope, you know, the senior citizens will mark it on their calendars and please come out and, you know, enjoy good food, good music, and you can win lots of prizes. Thank you.
Thank you. One, one clarification on the cars. You do, there are provisions that you can move the car, you can cover it, you can move it from the front to the back.
Yeah, no, they can do that.
Well, you said haul them off, cause there are some provisions that.
No, I'm saying if you leave them in the front.
Right, but they still can be protected and you can still own your car.
Yes.
There are some things that help you, uh, to be able to keep your car in your sight.
And what I'll do is for the next meeting, if you guys don't mind, if you can put it on the agenda, maybe as a discussion item, and I can read what
Okay.
the thing is, what we finalized with the state.
Thank you.
So excited about that.
Yes, ma'am.
We're not having, um, neighborhood watch this month, um, due to several different things. So we should, um, take it, it should come back, uh, next month. Also, um, some things, uh, we talked about today, uh, very good conversation about grass. But also here lately, I, I think that when we turn people's, you know, property in for tall grass, it look, it seems like it takes longer now for the grass to, to get cut. Uh, and I know most often the city has to do it by that point in time, you know, and it, and it takes an average of, I guess, about four weeks in order to do it. How long does it take after you send the letter and all?
I don't know, cause I don't cut the grass. I don't handle the notice process, but I don't know.
Two months? Well, I'm thinking a month, so.
And if you knew how backed up we are, I wish it was a one way, that they cut grass.
Yeah.
Um, it is, we have, we are the yard persons for more people than ever. We are cutting more grass and more people have given up and they get the letters and they don't react to the letters and we have to put them on the list. But I'll tell you, and I mean, it's something that, that you all, the budget and, you know, know that, we spend way too much money. And I guess it just kinda goes into public works, but we spend way too much money cutting grass and way too much time, but we don't have a choice. But it is taking longer because there's more and more and more yards to cut.
And it, it's raining, so the grass is growing really fast.
Very fast, very fast. And, and I know that's not, you know, are they a regular crew from the city that actually does?
People that almost do nothing but cut grass.
Okay, I was just wondering about that.
There are times that, you know, if hurricanes come in, if with all this rain just making the grass grow, that I have a bunch of drains to clean out, like we talked about earlier, they at times it is all hands on deck to do something else. If we have a big concrete pour or let's say a street buckles, which does happen, they at times that everybody's going to do whatever. So I can't say that any one person never does anything else, but we have people that make their whole, whole day, you know.
Cutting grass.
Riding lawnmowers, yes.
Okay.
And some of that's the legal delays, but some of it is just the backlog.
Right, right.
Okay.
You know, just the resources you're gonna put on, on grass cut.
I'm just saying, there's a, a lot going on right now. And the, do that, we have a bush hog, because some of the grass is.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Like three feet or so?
I'd like to know how many zero turns we have in new budget. Uh, I'm probably buying three for three or four for different departments. There are times that I'm buying two at a time. I mean, no, we have, we have equipment, we have bush hogs, we have, uh, you know, and just think of all the right of ways we cut as well. The same people cutting grass are out there. You see them, Jefferson Terrace, you know, St. Peter Street.
We're all blowing in the street, right?
But every once in a while, we have to, we have to remind people, okay? But, yeah, we cut a lot of grass.
Okay.
That meeting was all.
So, I, I'm just saying for the people out there, we, we turn grass in all the time. So please be patient with us, because you just heard what the problems are. So, um, it's not that we haven't turned it in and it's not that the city doesn't know about it, it just takes some time to get to it. And thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just a couple announcements. I don't know if everybody's aware, but love did break down this week. Uh, they are moving dirt out there, so that's a good thing. We've been waiting a long time and did a lot of work to get, initiate that through annexation and approving a bunch of sewer projects. So I think that's gonna be a big asset for the city, as well as, you know, one of our biggest festivals this year, the Chicago Festival is having this fundraiser this weekend. It's a ticketed event at the center, so we look forward to raise some money for a really big festival in town.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
On the crime look, meshes, donuts. I think it was BB guns or pellet guns.
BB guns.
I think it was some kids, children. It was the children, uh, that y'all caught maybe already?
It, it was juveniles. We had not caught them. They have a history of things.
Yes.
Uh, pellet gun in a window, uh, meshes was not targeted, okay? It was just random that it happened to be meshes.
Yeah.
Uh, and you don't mess with, uh, you know, our officers solve that pretty quick, you know, because our officers like donut chops, okay?
You know.
That's just a joke. But, uh, anyway, but yeah, it was some random kids and they rode around uh, out of whatever ridiculous reason, shooting windows. But it wasn't anything targeted at meshes or anyone at meshes.[1646.62]
Okay. Uh, we lost a fine friend, Ronnie Broussard. Jefferson Terrace and Door Street. He owns a land sold to the old Walmart and a few pieces of properties. That's, he died of cancer this last couple of days, so he went to school with me. But, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, just, uh, I wanted to say, that's what I really wanted to put on the agenda. I don't know if y'all realize that. I wanna talk about tall grass. Remember? Okay. I wanted to talk about that cuz the discussion almost ensued tonight, but so I won't revisit it. If it gets on the agenda, we can talk. But it's the process.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to talk about, the process, cuz misled better. I promise you, I got, we're in July and I have grass that hadn't been cut in my district since May. And I feel like it's five, six, seven, eight of them. And I'd actually, I want to talk to you about taking a ride and seeing if it.
I'd be glad to.
Makes sense, like we used to do.
Yeah, let's do it.
Like the good old days.
Like the good old days. Let's do it.
So, yeah, you, you can put it on the gen- if it's, if it's worth a, a whole discussion.
I think it would be worth.
About the process.
Worth a discussion. Uh, we get, you know, Matt here, we can get Joe here. That'd be fun.
Eh, that's why I brought it. That's why I said, put it on the agenda then cuz it wasn't on the agenda. We can talk about that too.
We're gonna talk about tele- telephone pedestals next.
Yeah.
Man, it's, it's, it's funny, it's funny you, you brought that up though, uh, about the mesh thing. I saw it on Facebook and, and everybody was, and I saw some people in the store and they said, oh, you know, it's like they killed somebody, you know?
Yeah.
That was.
It, it got blown out of proportion as if it was some, you know, purposeful targeting of a person or a business and it really wasn't.
I, I, I told him, I said, one thing I learned about being on the council and even at the barber shop, do not believe the first report. I promise you. I tell people, I said, do not believe the first report.
And some people have agendas. They, they put.
Second either.
Right.
Some people have an agenda when they put that stuff and, you know, we're not a very big town. Sometimes it's easy to figure out what their agenda is, but.
Us, we have other people.
Yeah.
It, the news. But, but I wanna, um, advertise this for the community on, um, uh, August the fourth, uh, there's a back to school drive. Uh, they're asking for donations, uh, they'll be collecting until July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The drop off location is at the city park. Uh, the back to school drive is August the fourth, eleven AM to two PM at the Martin Luther King Junior Center. I think GP L is, uh, and the city of New Iberia sponsoring it. Uh, I wanna say also they're doing haircuts that day. Uh, Cliff's Impressive Cuts is gonna be partnering with, with other barbers. They're gonna be doing haircuts as well. And that's gonna be from twelve noon, but it's gonna be within that process. So again, August four, fourth, in the Weston Park, they're gonna have a big old back to school, um, program. Like a back, school supplies, uh, haircuts, so that's always a good deal to have, uh. Mayor, that, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanna wish everyone good luck, whoever plans to run for reelection. Um, I do plan to run for this seat again, so hopefully I'll be here another four years. Time will tell. Um, I know it was a joy serving with all you guys, uh, for the last three and a half years and Mr. Dan last six months, you said. But, um, you know, touching base on the, the whole meshes shooting, you know, things would be a lot better. People just kept track of their kids. It's like bottom line, everyone's always blaming the police, elected officials. It's really the parents and I've said it before, you know, we have a parenting problem. Um, it's always juveniles doing these things. Why is someone out on the street sixteen years old at two AM? It doesn't make sense to me. But, um, you know, if we just had better parenting, you know, the world would be a better place, I do believe. And it'd make the police's job a lot easier, but that's all I have.
Thank you. And in this case, the parents is, the parents really cooperated.
That's good.
So, you know, sometimes it's just a kid's gonna do something that an immature kid does, you know? Been there, maybe did that.
Mayor, can, before you, one thing.
Yes.
I forgot cuz I, I thought about it this morning, Brooke, so, but you said it. I wanna congratulate everybody that's gonna qualify tomorrow. Not congratulate, but I wanna thank everybody running cuz that's something that's, you know, it's courageous to put yourself on the line to serve the public.
I took it.
Uh, and man, I'm sorry, I gotta put in a plug, man. You've been awesome at mayor. So, um, I'm just saying if anybody decides to.
Something's wrong.
Try to challenge our mayor, they gotta challenge me too. You've done, that's right. You've done an awesome job. I'm gonna be out there waving a flag. You know, you did a good job. And, and I know you're gonna do another good four years. That's what I had on my mind. I wanted to say that in public.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Well, I.
I'm sorry. Can I do that legally? Yeah, I can do that.
I think it's done.
Done.
If it's illegal, it's over with.
Wonderful. Yeah, well, thank you. Uh, qualifying is tomorrow and, uh, good luck to everybody and, of course, I plan on qualifying tomorrow. Um, and I really don't have anything else. With that, motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
Motion.